So now let me welcome to you County Executive Alan Kittelman.
Thank you, I get this. Thank you. Why don't you put that back? I don't need that. I think, is this working? Can you hear me? It's working? Um, thank you very much Ted for whatever you said about me. Um, no, Ted and Veronica have been friends for a long time, so thank you very much. And I thank you to the concerned citizens of Western Howard County for inviting me to be here. I appreciate it. This is the, uh, the fourth town hall I've held this year. I've made a commitment when I ran for office that I'd hold four town halls during every year. Uh, this is the fourth. So I will not have another one probably till next January, but um, uh, it's important for me, I believe, to come out and talk to you where you are instead of just expecting you to come to me. Um, and you brought up Chuck Ecker, and I was gonna start with that myself tonight. Um, Chuck Ecker unfortunately passed away yesterday. Uh, served two terms as our county executive, uh, was a deputy superintendent of our schools here. After serving as a, as county executive, he went back to his, his home was up, his home up in Carroll County where he was raised and where he had worked. He became superintendent of schools there for eight years. Uh, and I was fortunate enough to be able to work with him when he was county executive, but also as a state senator, I covered also Carroll County, so I got to work with him there as well. And not a finer man, not a finer man. So, uh, please keep Peggy and his family in your prayers. Uh, we did hear that the arrangements, they'll be having a viewing on a Sunday evening, Sunday afternoon, Sunday evening at Whiskey Funeral Home in the Elegant City Whiskey Funeral Home. And then on Monday, they're having services, I believe it's 10 o'clock at the Wild Lake Interface Center. Uh, so if anyone would like to pay respects. Also, just about tonight, um, I'll give a few comments. I usually try not to talk too much, I want to hear from you. Uh, and I will tell you from the very beginning that I don't always have all the answers. I do want to introduce some folks here who might be able to help us if we need to. Uh, Chris Merton is here, who's our director of the Department of Technology and Communication Services. We have John Byrd, uh, director of the Recreation and Parks. And our new planning and zoning director Val Lasdens are here to help out if there's any questions that I certainly can't deal with, or at least to make sure that we, uh, get the answers later if we can't get them tonight. There are also quite a few of our other folks who work in my office around here. Diane Wilson, my chief of staff is to the back. Deputy Chief of Staff John Hobbs Siddiqui is here too. Um, but just so if, they're taking notes, so if something comes up and I can't respond to it, we'll try to get back to you as soon as we can. Uh, again, my goal here is to listen and to respond when I can, but if I can't, to get back to you when I can. Uh, about Howard County, uh, it's been a quick and different life for me in the last 11 months. Uh, I've enjoyed it tremendously, but it also has been hard. And I was, I usually go around and tell people how much I love the job I have, and I appreciate the opportunity that you've given me to serve. Uh, but I also, people tell me, but you need to tell them it's hard, uh, because they think, yeah, it's just love, you're loving it, it's not very hard, but it is hard. Uh, we got a lot of work to do. Uh, we're trying the best we can to, to improve the quality of life for everyone in Howard County, especially, uh, our residents who, uh, who give a lot in their taxes and in their community to, to have a good place. And so we're trying to do the best we can with that. Um, I could tell ya, it's unique. I, I believe I'm the first county executive who lived in the west of Howard County. Uh, and I think that's, hopefully, gives me a different perspective, even though I grew up in the eastern part of Howard County, went to Athleton, uh, live now in the west, four kids going through Glen El High School, uh, one's still there, one teaching there. Uh, so have the roots pretty strong here in Howard County and have no plans on, on leaving. But for Howard County itself, you know, my goal is to, is to allow the issues, particularly when I think of the west, I think of the mulching issue. I know that might come up tonight, you know, we're certainly, uh, I've talked to Ted about that earlier. Uh, what we're doing now is we have two folks from, uh, the citizen's side, two folks from the farming community to come together. It's gonna be Zach Brendel and, um, and Brett Rutley, gonna sit down with Ted Mariani and Rick Lober, and Val Lasdens from our office and other folks from the Department of Planning and Zoning, gonna sit down with them in a smaller group to really try to craft a zoning regulation that will hopefully allow us to have the ability for the farming community to continue to do what they need to do, but also with the residents to be able to have some comfort in what they, they want as well. So, our goal was to try to really make that happen instead of having just a bunch of people talking and, and really get down and do it. That's why we thought a smaller group would be helpful, and so I appreciate Ted, your willingness to serve on that as well. Um, we have other issues, I, I know there's been a lot of talk about, we've been talking lately about the, uh, inter-county broadband network, ICBN. Uh, we talked recently about in our school system, they are all connected now, I believe, and Chris Merton can correct me, that our high schools all have 50 gigabyte? Oh, five?
Five gigs.
Five gigs of internet connectivity, which is like, I'm no computer whiz, but apparently that's really, really, really good. Um, and, and all of our schools, I think our middle schools have three, our other middle schools have one. Uh, still tremendous ability for, for our students to be able to have those resources at the school system. Uh, I was at Reservoir yesterday, day before, um, and we were watching a virtual class on Chinese. You know, we don't have the ability to have a Chinese language instructor at every school, but there was a Chinese instructor at Marriage Ridge who was teaching virtually to some students at Reservoir. And they do that for differential equations, which I could not even spell for you. Um, but they're doing that now too, because they have an expert at River Hill who can teach that and teaches to students throughout Howard County. So, we're trying to use the improved technology to be able to do that. But the reason I bring that up here is that we're also looking at ways in which we can use that opportunity with the ICBN to help those in western Howard County. Because there are a lot of folks out here in the west who are not able to get internet service because Verizon or Comcast aren't willing to go. And, you know, we can't force them to do it, but, uh, but we can try to figure out other ways to, to reach out, so Chris has been working very hard on that. And so hopefully, we'll have some news for you in the future. We can't, don't have any specifics right now, but I want you to know that that's something we've been working on very hard, uh, because, you know, I heard the other day that there's some, there's some teachers who live in the western part of the county who actually go to the school at night so they can do their work, because they can't get on the internet at home. And so mu, I mean, back in the 30s, whatever, electricity was considered essential, and so we really worked to make sure all of us had electricity and all the rural areas had electricity. I believe that internet service is essential, that we really need to have that if we're going to be able to provide the opportunities for our young people. So, um, so we're really focusing on that. I know that's been an issue for folks out here in the west. Uh, there are a bunch of other things, I mean, we are trying to do best we can with open government, that's one thing I wanted to make sure I, to bring more trust in county government. Uh, we have a, had wholesale changes in department planning and zoning. Uh, we wanted to make sure that people knew that they could get responses from the department planning and zoning, they could trust what they were hearing. Uh, I think Val has done a tremendous job in his short time he's been there, uh, but we've also hired two new deputies there. So we're really trying to focus on making that a department that you guys can go to and understand and can be relating to you. Uh, we're also working on something called Track Howard. Uh, during my campaign, I talked about Hoco Stat, we've actually kind of morphed it around to be called Track Howard. Uh, track meaning transparency, resiliency, accountability, uh, what was the C? Collaboration and knowledge. Um, trying to make sure that you have all the ability to find out what we're doing to hold us accountable, but also that we have the performance measures we need to make sure we're doing the best we can with your tax dollars that you work so hard for. So, uh, I think it's a two-way street there, we need to have it to help us be stronger, but you need to have it so that you can hold us accountable. So, uh, so we're working on that as well. I think, I don't want to go into too, too much more detail about that. I will tell you that in the first 11 months, worked as hard as I could to do what I could. I came in, we had a $15.8 million deficit when we first walked in the door. Now, it's weird here, because when you get elected as county executive, you don't have a three-month transition period as a governor had. Like, a lot of people come up to me and go, "Oh, you took office on January 20th." No, I took office December 1st, and I got elected November 4th. And so when you have such a short time period, you gotta kind of get running as fast as you possibly can, and we, and I think we did, but I'm telling you, in November, when I sat down with the budget folks, they told me, "Alan, we got a $15.8 million deficit." Then it's like the whole world is about fixing that deficit, and Chris, and John, and Val wasn't there at the time, but all the departments, we asked them all to reduce their budgets so we can make it happen. And they did such a great job, not me, they did such a great job, that we end up with a $4 million surplus, which we will use for next year, uh, for things that, you know, we need, like road resurfacing and other one-time projects. Uh, so, we're trying the best we can, but those are the kind of things that were rushing through us, and I'm sure I've missed things, and we're working on things, and, you know, I apologize if I haven't done everything, but we're gonna try to do more things, and, and we could talk about some issues that you care about and I'd be more, but can we go ahead and, did you want to ask the first question?
I want you people to come to the microphone and just line up and queue up with your questions. We will thank you as you line up. I'm sure there are questions for the county executives.
Okay. Here you go. Oh, here's one, right here.
I will start, Alan, off with my own question, and that is, what do you-
Well, I don't think they're gonna hear you, you have to go to the microphone, Ted. Veronica! Yeah.
I'll start off with my own question. I'm Ted Mariani. Uh, what do you think the long-term impacts of the Tier 4 legislation will be? Will this create an impetus for large-scale institutional or commercial activity on these large tracks that have significantly reduced value because they can no longer be used for residential purposes? We see that as a threat. I don't know what the future holds, but do you have any thoughts on that?
I certainly have thoughts on that. Um, the Tier 4 legislation, for those of you who don't know what it is, um, is that in the legislature, back when I was in Annapolis, uh, the legislature passed, I did not support this, requirement that each county, uh, develop planning tiers. And in Howard County, well, in all the counties, the plan, the Tier 4 is the area in the county where you will not allow any major subdivisions. Uh, it was really essentially designed first to stop any development on septic systems. And what the governor, Governor Malley at the time really wanted to do, he wanted to stop all development on septic systems, period. He just wanted to stop it all. And of course, that fortunately didn't pass. Uh, but the second thing was to try to do this, where you have a Tier 4, where you could have nothing but a minor subdivision. Well, in Howard County, a minor subdivision is four homes. So in Howard County, when they drew that map and did Tier 4 across most of western Howard County, that meant that no matter how much property you had there, you could only build four homes at the maximum. Now, I see that as taking someone's property without compensation. I see that as taking the farmer's value, or the landowner's value, I should say, without giving them compensation. And so if you had 200 acres of land, when you could have maybe built 25 homes and they used that for your retirement or for your children's education, now you're told you can build four. So, I guess a response, Ted, is I do have a concern of what would happen if it stays in place the way it is right now, but I can tell you, my goal is to reverse that. My goal is to put legislation in, which I hope to do before the end of the year, uh, going back to what the county council actually initially did. If you remember, when the tiers were developed a few years ago, the county council amended the county executive's plan, and they said the Tier 4 should just be the parcels that are already preserved, like my farm is preserved. Well, I don't mind if I'm in Tier 4, because I can't develop it anyway. And four of the five council members voted for that. It went to the county executive and he vetoed it. The council wasn't willing to override his veto, and they compromised, they came back, and they still took away a lot of folks' property, they grandfathered some people in. And what was bad about the grandfathering, I think, is that they grandfathered people in who had the ability to do the perk testing and all, but not everybody could do that. So the ones who got grandfathered in were the ones who had the means to be able to protect themselves. Well, there are some people who didn't have the means to protect themselves, and they've lost all their rights and their property. And so I think in the, you know, we have, we have schools out here that are under capacity, and it's kind of strange, we built schools because we thought it was gonna be really crowded out here, the economy went down, so we didn't build the houses, then we just say, "You can't build any more houses out here," and our schools are 67% in capacity. Uh, to me, it makes more sense to give those property rights back to the residents, so, you know, I'll be putting in legislation, hopefully before the end of the year, as I said, we're working on that, I know I've worked on it with the Department of Planning and Zoning, to try to put that together and give the citizens their property rights back, and then we'll see what happens from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's good news.
Hey, it's not passed yet, so, yeah.
I think we're trying.
Hey, my name is Teresa, and I'm with the Friends of Pavilin Mill Road, and we're protesting proposed cluster development on our road. Um, we feel that it's out of character with our road, and we feel that cluster development, developers are taking an abusive way in getting these cluster developments in on our road. Um, so we want to know what you think about that. We've written you several times, uh, we haven't really gotten any direct response. Um, we want Parks and Recreation from Howard County to buy the land from the developer, and we are wondering if you could back us with that.
Okay, no, I appreciate your question, I have heard about the project, and, um, and thank you, Teresa. Um, I, I can't say that Park and Recreation buy the property, because if that, we can't just do that, because we, everyone in the whole county would say, "Buy our, buy this property, we don't want someone to build next to us." Cluster zoning has been around for a long, long, cluster development's been around for a long, long, long time. There's a cluster development actually in front of my farm, where we live. It used to be a farm in front of our farm, and now it's a bunch of houses and they're clustered, and they have an open space. Um, I'm not opposed to cluster development, I think actually in some ways it's a better way to have open space. Um, now, with your situation, I know I've talked to Val a little bit, you said there aren't any revised plans that haven't come in yet, or, and so I guess that they're waiting for is-
And the set aside land is not developable land.
Okay.
So that is just an abuse of cluster development.
Okay, you said the set aside land's not developable land, what do you mean by that? You mean talking about from the cluster development?
Yeah, they have to set aside like-
Right.
-three acres, maybe one acre they're gonna build on.
Yep.
Most of that's not developable on this-
Yeah, and I mean, but that, I understand what you're saying, uh, but that's certainly the way things have been done, and that's the way it was done in the places where I am too, because we have a bunch of areas, a bunch of steep slopes or whatever. But I, I guess I should say, I'm not opposed to cluster development, and I'm, I'm not gonna, I know that you may not be happy with that, but I, I don't think that we can just say we're not gonna do cluster development in Howard County. I think we, I guess we look at different places, and I know that the Department of Planning and Zoning will review whatever plans come in.
They're not great with responding to us.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good, that's a good thing, that's certainly one of the goals I talked about earlier, so, um, but from now, right now, I, I can't tell you I'm opposed to cluster development, so I'll have to wait and see how things come through.
Can you look at what's going on?
I will, I'll talk to Val more about it. So, thank you. Thank you.
Being more involved, that would be nice.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Bob?
I'm Bob Steyer. I live on Jennings Chapel Road, and I live in a communications black hole. And I'm glad to hear that you are working the issue relative, I've been trying since the end of the, of 1999, trying to get cable or fiber past our house. One half mile to the south of us, they have cable, I beg your pardon, fiber. One half mile north of us, they have fiber. So, anything that you can do to help that situation, I mean, this is 2015. It's something ought to be able to be accomplished to solve some of the problems. And they do have a good argument relative to Verizon is in the business to make money, and the why they're not doing it, I never got a real answer, other than the fact that there's not enough, uh, density of, of homes in the area.
That is the answer, I mean, that is actually the, but that's the answer.
Well, but this particular problem, there is a group of homes, my estimate only 50 to 100 homes that do not have fiber or cable past their houses. For what reason? They got a switch box up on Jennings Chapel and Hipsley Mill that they've been repairing, the guys that keep coming out to repair our phones say, "All the technicians have said we need to change this to fiber, but it hasn't happened, and nobody will say it's going to happen in the near future."
Okay. I appreciate that, Bob, I will look, we're working on it, and I know you and I are gonna try to get together and sit down and talk about some things, and we can talk more about it too.
Right.
But I appreciate it.
Second thing, and just, just a comment on the rain tax.
Yep.
Is the western part of the county getting their fair share of the tax back?
We are working on some places there. First of all, I could talk about the rain tax itself in a second, but, um, there are some farms, actually, believe it or not, the way they measure it right now for us is by acreage. So we actually get more if we do more out in the west than we do if we do in the east, believe it or not. So, I know the Patrick Farm, I think I saw Mr. Patrick here earlier, oh, there is, uh, we're looking at, working with them on trying to deal with some of their river, the streams going through, the Cacktail Creek going through there. So we are looking at ways in which we can help out in the west as well, but let me, let me talk about the rain tax itself, because I think that's the other issue, is the rain tax. And, um, our goal, uh, I'm hoping again, by the end of this year to be able, we've been working, I asked, um, my transition team to look at that when we took office, and I've asked my spending affordability advisory committee to look at that. Um, and I was told by both, "Don't rush it right now, we gotta figure out a way to find another funding source." Because if you know about the rain tax, even though, um, the legislature, I mean, Governor Hogan advocated repealing it, the legislature said, "Okay, but you still have to have a funding source." So really, all they said was, "Okay, it's repealed, but you gotta still have either rain tax or something else, a tax or some other fee, you gotta have something." And so, uh, our work over the last year has been, "How do we figure out how to do that?" And I think we found some ways to do it, so I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to announce something before the end of this year, that we're gonna be working on a phase out of the rain tax here in Howard County as well. Again, assuming I get support from the county council.
And it, if you're not successful, what form is the coming back? What form would that take?
Well, what happens is, what form it takes is that we go back to properties that are both public and private, try to figure out ways in which we can remediate, either streambeds or other types of stormwater remediation, just that we can put things in to help it so there's less sediment, less other things going into the creeks. Like I said, the Patrick Farm's a good example, they have a lot of streams going through their, their property, the Cacktail Creek there, and so if we can do ways to help them to be able to ensure and to shore up their, um, the sides of their, their stream there, we can help stop the flow of sediment down to the creeks and down to the bay. So that's kind of how, when I talk about coming out to the west, that's how we can do that, we can work with farmers, we can work with other residents on how they can help do things on their properties. Okay?
Last issue that I'd like to discuss.
Third, okay.
The third and the last.
That's okay, Bob. Hey, Ray.
The community center has changed the western part of the county. Thank you for your participation, your assistance, uh, it's been very helpful. That complex between the community center, library, fire station, has been tremendous. If you're looking for another subject area, of course, this is a tough budget year.
They always are, yeah.
Saltwater pool.
Okay.
Now, Columbia has had pools for its existence. They don't realize, in the western part of the county, we don't have a pool.
West Howard Spring Club, West Howard, but yeah.
Pardon?
West Howard, up on that, yeah.
We don't have a reasonable costing pool with it.
Okay.
However you want to say it.
Okay.
And, and for what it's worth, please keep us in mind for that.
Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also, before Bob leaves, I want to say, he was instrumental in the community center too. I mean, a lot of us may not know that, but Bob served on the committee with me to work on that back when I was on the county council, and Chris Merton was on the county council, and I really appreciate Bob's leadership on that, and so the reason we have a good community center is because of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next?
I'm Stu Cohn, president of the Howard County Citizens Association, and I have just a general question. Is the Howard County Council, excuse me, the Howard County political environment the same scenario as in Congress, Democrats versus Republicans, without any compromise?
No, 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 no. Um, not, not even close, not even close. Uh, I think sometimes you'll hear issues where we differ, and that's gonna happen. It's just like it was in Annapolis for me, Stu. Uh, when I was in Annapolis, I would tell people probably 90% of the time, we all agreed, but you never knew that. I mean, I would have people come visit me sometimes in Annapolis, they'd look at the board and go, "Holy cow, I can't believe it's 47-0 almost every time." It's because those are issues that aren't controversial, and they're the ones that pretty have a very common sense response. And so, the same thing's true in Howard County, you'll hear about the times of the county council, and I don't agree. Uh, you'll go back and if you look at the votes even this past year on the county council, but most of the time that we've had legislation down there has been 5 to 0. But, so, I, no, it's not that way. You know, we'll have our back and forth, I mean, I'm a Republican for a reason. You know, I'm a philosophically a conservative on fiscal issues, more moderate on social issues, and so you'll probably see me and the council on freedom issues and things like that bucking heads, and that's okay. I mean, we gotta learn to work together. Um, but, but no, I don't, I wouldn't even come close to saying we're like what's in national politics. Uh, most of the time, and Chris is a former county council member as well, I mean, when you get elected, you really do, you forget about the R or the D, you really do. And fortunately for us, local politics are not very often the type of issues that we have fights about in, in Congress, or even in the state. It's mostly zoning, or it's transportation, I mean, things that aren't like, "Well, that's certainly a D issue, or that's certainly an R issue." No, there's not, that's a community issue. So no, I would tell you that while I have issues at certain times with them, I am certainly respect them and look forward to continue to work with them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Hi, how are you?
Good. I am Susan Scheit, and when Ted invited the Greater Highland Crossroads community to come and speak, because we have worked closely with them on several issues.
Great.
I said, "Oh, I just read in the Howard County Times about money for bicycle pass." But the more I thought about this, I am now president of the Greater Highland Crossroads Association.
Congratulations.
And, I guess.
Daniel Larry's at home.
And, um, we recent, recently had to postpone Highland Days, which is October 31st, and you usually are gracious enough to stop by and see us.
Halloween.
And at my table, the first question everyone's going to ask me is, "What's happened with BRX zoning?" So, um, as you know, the citizens of Highland immediately opposed it, signed the petition for the referendum, which of course, didn't work, but we were pleased with your activity on the senate, supporting referendums. And I hope that if a referendum issue on anything went through again, it would be more closely looked at in the beginning, to say it's not written correctly after 7,000 signatures almost, is really not helping the citizens out. When it failed, um, I became president of the Greater Highland Crossroads Association and set up a village listening tour with the whole county council coming. And that was June the 24th, 2015. It was an incredible evening. So many people came, we had to delay it, because Jen Torasa couldn't get in, because she couldn't find a place to park on the road, and then couldn't get through the crowd. And then we had to meet, move from our hall to the church that holds 180 people. And then we had testimony all night, and everyone testified, "BRX zoning is wrong for our historic rural crossroad. It triples the amount." And we really are just asking to have a petition written to do away with BRX for Highland. We don't want to get involved with the other communities, we don't know what's good for them, but for our little historic crossroad, the character is going to be destroyed with that. Um, let's see what else I had for you.
And also, I think, I think you went to a meeting, right, Val?
I was gonna say.
I was gonna say, I think he did, actually took off.
That was my next thing, that we had a meeting called by Mary Kay Sigity and Greg Fox, and Val was there, and Grace Fieldhouser was there.
Yeah, she's here tonight too.
Yep, I greeted her tonight, yeah, and we discussed it for a very long period of time, longer than any of us thought we would be there. And, um, at the end, it was sort of punted to Val, who's new and hiring people for his department, and very busy, we knew that, and they asked him to review it. But when I'm at Highland Day, they're going to say to me, "Have you gotten rid of BRX zoning?" Because it's going to destroy the character of our community. And I also would like to say Fred Dorsey's here, from Historic, and for nine years, he, Historic Howard County has had it on their list of endangered sites to save a rural historic crossroad. So my question for you is, where do you stand on BRX zoning? And what have you heard behind the scenes? And what have you heard behind the scenes? Because I haven't heard anything from Val. He did, I shouldn't say anything, he very nicely emailed back when I emailed him and said, I'm working on it, I'm hiring people. He has told me that he's hiring people to work with communities, just like the western communities and like Highland, and I look forward to one of those meetings, Val. But the BRX zoning issue's going to come up very quickly.
Well, I mean, actually, if.
You just made a key hire.
Actually, I mean, I think I would prefer to make Val to focus on it, because he met with you, and also, in all candor, as I sat on the county council, zoning issues are almost exclusively council issues. I don't, I can have my department give recommendations, but the council basically controls it.
Oh, I understand that, but I would love to have your recommendation, that'd be removed.
Well, that's why he's important. Do you want to, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, maybe he's just to respond.
Yeah, if you want to stand here, so they can hear you.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, Val Lastins. And we did meet with Mrs. Scheit, and identified some of those key issues regarding the BRX zone, especially in Highland, because I think that there were some unintended consequences that we identified when we did that map analysis. And I think it is going to be important to revisit the BRX zone in Highland, and we also want to take a look at its impact in other communities, because the way that it was structured, I think you're right, that there were unintended consequences that allowed development to spill into areas that I don't think anyone had envisioned. My key hire, I hope to make, to make an announcement tomorrow, I've got one more staff member. That community planning effort would be done through our community planning division. So, once I've got things lined up, maybe I can communicate back, and we can lay out a schedule.
Well.
I'm coming closer, thank you.
Doesn't completely answer Highland's question, because we feel in our heart that this new zoning will destroy the character of our community. And just to make it smaller, or to make some adjustments. And we know that some people, a few people who own property are making a lot of calls and putting a lot of pressure on keeping it. But I would remind you, we filled that church that holds 180 with all the people, and that whole evening unanimously, they said, remove it from Highland. So if you want to listen to the citizens, the thing to do is to remove it from Highland. Now, I had one other thing, because bicycles have been important to me for years, and I have written many times about the need for a bike pass, and I called my friend Mel Stern, who is our pediatrician for Howard County and Highland, who has been hit by a bike, by a car while he was riding his bike. And we've had numerous, not only accidents, but deaths in the west. And his suggestion to me on the phone was, and I want to pass it along rather than just say one thing, was, we have the bicycle signs up that say, share the road. We need bicycle signs that say bicycle warning for roads like Howard Roads, where there are embankments, where there's no place for a bike rider to jump, or a jogger to jump off the road when a truck's coming too close. That should be a warning sign, not safe for jogging and walking, and send them to another. So that's from, that's from Mel Stern, and I would just say, I have a million reasons why we need good bike trails throughout the county, and they can be done in a chain, and they should be done safely. I think they're done well along 108 in Montgomery County, where they have a green strip. And then they have a bicycle, walking, jogging path, and that, which gives that little green strip with a tree in it, gives a safety edge to that bicycle rider, and is much safer for younger riders. I will tell you, as a parent who raised their children in Howard County, and I was raised in Howard County, Howard County kids in the west don't have bikes, because their parents think it is not safe. Mel Stern's children didn't have bikes either, I ask him. So, I just want to put in a flag for some of the million dollars that we're getting for bike pass, please use some of it in the western county.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Yes, hi, my name's David Furman. I'm encouraged to hear that you're working on extending broadband access to the west. I've been working with a number of my neighbors out in Mount Airy, the Howard County portion, to try and obtain broadband access. Working with Comcast and Verizon has been extremely frustrating, and, you know, I just returned from a trip to rural Utah last week, and, you know, even in cities where, or towns where the population's probably less than 200 people, I was able to get broadband access in all of the beds and breakfasts. And it just kind of reinforced the fact that, you know, in Howard County, where we're the one of the most, you know, one of the richest counties in the nation, it seems a real shame that we don't have access to that broadband that, you know, would help us to be able to work from home, and help our kids do schoolwork. And as you mentioned, we, you know, my next door neighbor is a teacher, and they don't have broadband access, that we rely on, you know, Wi-Fi hotspots that are very expensive to use to basically pay per megabyte over cellular access. So, you know, I'm really encouraged to hear you're looking at leveraging the ICBN. And I'd also encourage you, if you have the opportunity, I know you have a cable advisory committee, I'd like to see representation from someone in the western portion of the county on that as well.
I can tell you that we are doing that. We are getting the cable advisory back up, and we'll make sure there'll be representation of the west.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and thanks for promoting this, because I know you've been very active in getting it going. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi.
My name is Mike Thompson. First, I'd like to thank you for your comments about the storm water protection fee, or watershed fee. As someone who makes their living doing stream restoration and wetland restoration, there's a whole economy out there that 90% of the population doesn't understand exists, for the construction jobs, the design jobs. So, I like living and working in Howard County, because the joke is, it comes out of this pocket and goes into this pocket. My main reason for being here tonight is because I actually, I don't live in western Howard County, so I apologize. I live in District 5.
Good, I'm glad you're here.
I live in Bethgate.
I'm glad you're here.
Which you may be very familiar with.
Mm-hmm.
And we have quite the speeding problem in my neighborhood. We're a neighborhood of 800 to 1,000 homes, probably, and the average speed on our road is 35 miles an hour on any given day, but we have people that do 60 miles an hour down our street. We've commissioned three speed studies, all three of which were done on days they should not have been done, because of the timing, one was a snowstorm, one was a holiday, and the other one, BG&E, had half the road closed for, they were repairing a gas line.
So who did the studies?
Department of Transportation has done two, and the police have done one.
Okay, so that's one. And when, and how long ago were they done?
Well, they won't allow you to do more than one in a year.
Okay.
So this has spanned four years, the three studies.
Okay.
And we, we would like some type of traffic calming, we would like speed humps. And so, the, the speed studies, the 85th percentile needs to be 35 miles per hour. We are at 34.7 on one, 34.8 on the other. And we do have people doing 60 miles an hour in a residential neighborhood. And we have tried every means possible, but because we do not meet that threshold, we are not eligible. We have had three drunk driving accidents in a half mile stretch of road in my neighborhood. All within a year. We have had several mailboxes taken out, taken out on a regular basis. We are not asking the county to fund any kind of traffic calming. We will pay for the speed humps. We just need permission to put them on a county road. And we, we've tried and tried, and the traffic department just, they tell us their hands are tied. So, all we want is permission, and we will pay to put the speed humps in. I would love three-way stops. People were on the stop signs all the time. And we do have a lot of young drivers in our neighborhood, but they are not the problem. Officer Ventura has been out in our neighborhood several times. He actually has permission anytime he wants to sit in my driveway. I have talked to him, I have his card in my wallet, so I call him anytime. And he was pulling people over the other day for running stop signs, just blatantly running stop signs. Pulled over 30 people, 21 of them were the adults in the neighborhood. So, we have a serious problem, and it's not being taken seriously, in our opinion.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing it to my attention. I mean, I have to, I mean, I know where it is, but I didn't have to know this knowledge. So, I will certainly sit down, I know someone probably has written that down, right? So, so we can look at it, and we gave back to you and figure out what we can do. You know, I'll talk to the transportation office as well.
And we just fear it's going to be even more of a problem, because Mrs. Harbin passed away recently, from what I understand, and her intent was to donate the property to her church, who is subsequently going to sell it to a developer. And it's about 60 acres back there. I don't mind the additional houses, but what I mind is the additional traffic. People on our street, in our neighborhood, homes sell within a week to a month. On our section of street, they take six months, nine months to sell. So, not only does, is it a danger to our children, to us walking to the bus stop in the morning, but it's also, you know, a lot of us feel like it's decreasing our property value in the area as well.
Thank you.
I recommend you have a town meeting down there.
No, that's, that's fine, no, I mean, these are open to everybody, but thank you for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. No, I mean, everywhere we go, anybody from the county wants to come talk to me, I want them to talk, because, you know, I don't want to wait for a year to get to someone's location, if they want to come talk to me about something, so.
Hi.
Thank you again very much, thank you.
My name is Jill Berry, and I'm a parent of a current Glenwood Middle School student, and I'm the parent of a former Glenell High School student, and I'm the parent of a couple of former Lisbon Elementary School students. At the beginning of the summer, there was a mold outbreak at Glenwood Middle School. Howard County is not following your Track Howard policy. Your Track Howard plan is track transparency. Howard County Public Schools are not transparent. We are getting more of our information from ABC Two News, and the Baltimore Sun, and a Facebook group that was at the beginning of the summer called Mold It at Glenwood Middle School, and now because there were five outbreaks of mold, it's now mold at Howard County schools, or mold in Howard County schools. So the track of transparency, resiliency, accountability, collaboration, and knowledge, Howard County Public Schools is not being transparent with information. They, I have posted at least 60 questions to them on Facebook and Twitter. I've made all my posts public, they haven't responded to a single one. Howard County Public Schools have not responded to anything on mold at Glenwood, Glenell, Athleton, and the two other schools. They have been completely media blackout. And it's not right. It's not right. That recently, they tried to sell cafeteria tables at an auction, at a, cafeteria tables from an unknown Howard County school, Howard County Public School. Cafeteria tables that were listed in the write-up of the auction item as tables covered in mold, where you will need to clean. Parents found out about it, the mold tables, the moldy cafeteria tables were removed from the auction, and apparently were about to be transported to the dump, but meantime, parents said, no, these tables need to be tested. Because we're, we're under the impression that all of these moldy items, there's been a bulletin board, there's been a projector screen, there are numerous ceiling tiles, there are desks, there are fabric chairs in the staff room at Glenwood Middle School, there are ceiling tiles at Glenwood High School. We only have the high school, I mean, rather, we, it's not the high school's fault, it's not the principal of any of these schools' fault. We only have Howard County Public Schools assurance that they're sending these out for testing. But who are they sending these items to? And are they sending every item? Because this is, some of these issues are dating back to 2007, 2011. And the attitude from Howard County Public Schools is, we called it air quality issues. Therefore, we told you what it was. But that's not being transparent, because there's a difference between air quality issues and mold and spore counts. And we're getting some information from Glenwood Middle School. We've, Glenwood Middle School, on the Glenwood Middle School website, there's maybe five to six reports listed with spore count, and they're, you know, they're highly technical, but they do show that someone at, I think it's, at one of these environmental forums is going from, not all the rooms though, they're going into maybe six, seven, 12 rooms, and taking readings. But since we don't have anything to really base it on, plus we've only got them doing it, these are Howard County contractors, you know, I think at this point, we need another more independent body to come in, to deal with these issues in our Howard County Public Schools. You know, I think it's really sad that we're getting most of our information from a news station and the Baltimore Sun. But thank goodness, we've got two media outlets in this community who care enough to be our voice. Because Howard County Public Schools is ignoring us. They're basically saying, it's a, it's a, it's a mold issue, it doesn't matter, but we've got kids who have nosebleeds. I don't care if it's one child that has a nosebleed, or respiratory issues, or is immunosuppressed or something. If it's one child, that's one child too many. How do we know that Howard County are keeping track of the kids that are going through the health rooms? It's, you know, so I would just say, what can you do about transparency and accountability with the Howard County Public Schools? Because if it's in five schools, it's likely in more, because some of these schools are quite old.
It's not even just the age of the school.
Right, no, I know, that is definitely.
First of all, before I'm a county executive, I'm a parent. And I have four children who have gone through Howard County Public Schools, one who's still a junior at Glenell. I have a daughter who teaches at Glenell. So I have a reason to care about this issue, and I do, more so than just because I'm county executive. I will put my parenting way above county executive any day. And so, it is something, and then I have been talking to, to the school system about this. I've gone to Glenell, I've gone to Glenwood, actually, I was at Glenwood, I actually went to Lisbon today.
Great.
And I will tell you that it's something that we have to make sure, I do believe the school system has not handled the communication very well, to say the least. And there's no question that it goes back to the whole trust issue. Because if you don't talk about it openly, then you lose the trust. And that's one thing I've been trying to do in my first 10 months, 11 months. And so, what I can do about that is continue to, to go to the schools, talk to the, talk to the teachers, talk to the, to the school system, talk to Dr. Fuess, which I have done, and continue to see what's going on. Now, I was at Glenwood, and I talked to Tommy Thrasher, and some, and Mr. Apple, I guess, Dave Apple, and some other folks there, and they're telling me it's a whole lot better, that the system they put in there is tremendously better.
But that's firsthand eyewitness accounts.
Right, now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do studies too.
I'm talking, we need an independent consultant to go in there and just, you know.
Right.
Is, are these spore counts where they need to be.
And it's my understanding that they are hiring a new consultant as well. Now, the problem is, when you say independent, they're going to pay for it.
Right.
And so if you think paying for somebody makes them not independent, I mean, but they're going to have to pay for it.
Let the parents have some input, let the parents have some input in who's being hired. Don't just go to the low bidder, because a couple of these, these consultants are, have previously worked for Howard County Public Schools. So they're sort of on the Howard County Public Schools payroll, if you will.
I will.
They're getting them from local places, they're coming from Carroll County. Get somebody from somewhere else to come in.
But I will tell you, I met with some citizens about this issue in July, and at that time, there wasn't a concern as much about area, who does it, because they were saying, well, you know, they came back and said there was mold.
Right.
You know, and so, if they were being paid by the school system, and they said it was mold, I think that would hopefully give you some trust that they're saying what's really happening there. But I do understand that they're going to a different company, and so, you know, we'll have to see what happens with that company, and what goes on there. All I can say is that what I continue, what I can do, is to continue to talk to them, continue to express concern. That's why I went to Glenell and Glenwood and Lisbon, just to make sure. But also, I will tell you, we got to be careful in Lisbon. I mean, I think the gentleman in Lisbon, the principal, is a great person, and I think he was very concerned that he better get out right away before anyone thinks he's trying to hide something. But really, I went to look at it today, there was a little bit of water going in, I mean, it wasn't what was happening at Glenwood. And, but I think we've gotten almost to the point where now people are afraid, they're going to, they're going to report when there's a leaky, you know, anything, and so.
Personally, I think that's great.
No, no, no.
I think everyone should be reporting everything, no matter how small, because I think at this point, Howard County Public Schools have shown that they're not trustworthy, and that they're not transparent, and they're not giving the parents the information. Because I mean, the, the attitude at the meeting on August 20th at Glenwood Middle School was one of a frontery. It was like, why are you asking us these questions? The person, the area person actually said, I can't believe all of this stuff is being said on Facebook. Well, you know what? That's all we have. At the, at the time, that's all we had, was a Facebook group that was, that was posting information, photographs and what have you, and reports, because we weren't getting anything. It was before Baltimore Sun got involved, it was before the ABC news station got involved. So really, that was a kind of a slap in the face to parents. It was like, they're not, they weren't understanding their audience. That was not the audience that you would tell something like that to. We were, we needed to hear from Dr. Fuess. We actually, at that meeting, we needed to hear from a person, or the group that did the mold remediation cleaning, and, and that person or persons were conspicuously absent, which tells me that mold remediation at Glenwood Middle School was hardly done, was done by untrained custodial staff. I mean, not in, you know, the custodial staff were trained, but the custodial staff were not trained in mold remediation. They didn't, the mold remediation didn't happen until fairly far into August, like August 3rd or so. You know, and then, and this is only at Glenwood Middle School, so this mold remediation hasn't happened at Glenell, or I think it's the, I don't want to name the other two schools, two, three schools, because I don't know which they are, but this is, this is, this is a big, serious problem for Howard County Public Schools.
I think, I think it's a serious problem, I think it's something we have to focus on. But I also think it's important that we get the facts, and that's what you want to do.
Right, exactly, I want the facts. We're fact poor.
Right. But when I went to Glenell, I know that there was one ceiling tile, and I know they fixed it. I mean, so I'm trying to make sure, I guess my job is try to make sure I get as much information as possible, so that I understand whatever kind of, you know, input I can give to the school system. A quick question for you, because we were talking earlier about not responding, were you saying they weren't responding on Facebook, or they weren't responding to like contacts that you had contacted them privately?
Oh, I haven't, I haven't emailed them, I haven't phoned them. I have only contacted them on Facebook. I have contacted them on Facebook, my Facebook pages, all those posts are public, I've contacted them since August 20th.
Right.
30, 40, 50, 60 questions. No response to me, and I've identified myself as a, as a Howard County parent. No response to the mold in Howard County Public Schools. And in fact, actually, if you go onto the Howard County Public Schools Facebook page, and you go down at the very bottom, on the left-hand side, and comments that are on that page, comments that I've made, where I've tagged Howard County Public Schools, someone is going in there and deleting them. Yeah. So they're, they're sanitizing their page. I, you know, they're not responding to questions. You know, I've, I've posted questions on their page, I've tagged Howard County Public Schools on my own Facebook page, I've posted questions on Twitter, and they're just not, they're just not responding. They're ignoring it.
Have you contacted the board members too?
I have personally not. People on the, in the mold in Howard County Public Schools have talked to Ms. Fallon Court and Janet Sadiqie and another lady, and so there's been a lot of conversation. I'm completely, social media is my business, so I'm just basically focusing on social I'm completely, social media is my business, so I'm just basically focusing on the social media.
No, I appreciate that, I'm trying to figure out, because I mean, because the school board certainly is the top of the rung at the school system. And so, and we do have an election coming up, three of them are gonna be up for election. I mean, that's certainly an issue you should be talking to them about, because they should be listening to the citizens on that issue, so...
I mean, Howard County Public Schools, they know how to use a Facebook page, because they're posting about events, racial issues, you know?
Yeah. No, I appreciate it, Ms. Berry, thank you very much, and thank you for your advocacy.
Sure, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Hello, Sean, how are you? Good to see you.
Hi. My name is Shen.
Get a little closer, take a look.
Okay. My name is Shen Lu, President of Clarksville Residents Against the Proposed Motuary in Clarksville on the environmentally sensitive lot. Executive, first we want to thank you so much for your hard work, and you absolutely have done tremendous work, and really are making a huge difference. And we feel so encouraged to, you know, to see that we have a new DPC director here, and I know that one of the biggest challenge you face is a lot of zoning issues in Howard County, okay? You inherited a lot of, you know, very tough situation, and, you know, the issues I'm talking today actually concern the whole western Howard County, because we all drink well water. So water quality is so important for everybody, also important for our children, our future. And also, the high-quality water streams are very rare, they all located in western Howard County, okay? So, so, okay. Let me see. Because of the importance of environmental protection, you have paid special attention to this environmental issues. Like most recently, our, we hired environmentalist to identify springheads and wetlands in that proposed site that were denied by the developer before, okay? And also, your office worked so hard to, with MDE. MDE already confirmed the existence of springhead and wetland. In other words, to build an 18,000 square feet motuary building plus 100 parking spaces, 80% of the impervious surface on top of the high-quality springheads and on this high-quality stream lot will completely destroy this springhead, because it's right in the middle of this three, only three acre, okay? So, you know, my question is that, does the county plan to hire an environmentalist? Does the county plan to hire a geologist? Because we need qualified environmentalist to, you know, help county, to help DPC, to help the Health Department, to be the gatekeeper. Actually, the residents in the past are doing the work for our gatekeeper. Like in Clarksville, we hired expert to identify all these important environmental issues. If we had not done so hard, and then this spring, this high-quality stream, stream and spring would have been destroyed. And these springs are the bloodline to the whole middle protection, high-quality watershed drainage area. Once this springhead is destroyed, the whole high-quality watershed drainage area will dry out. So this is something very serious, it's very, very dangerous to our environment. This, actually, this is a bring, an issue like irreversible damage to our environment and the future. So my question is for you, okay?
And I can't say that we're gonna hire that right now, I mean, we do have budget issues hiring more people. I know that Val, we can work with Val, I don't know if you want to mention anything about that.
Yeah, yeah, actually.
Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me. We agree that in the past, we've relied exclusively on developers' consultants to provide the environmental information, and so, luckily, we have on staff Dave Bolner, he's a former MDE employee. And so what I've done, based on what happened here, we began to check some other sites, and we found some discrepancies in other properties around the country, around the county. So I've asked the head of our division that deals with that to put our environmental person on to verify the information that is being submitted. And we're gonna test this and see how well that works to make sure Dave isn't overworked, and then we may come back for a budget request for an individual, but we just need to see how this plays out. So we have put an environmental specialist on point to verify the environmental information we're getting.
Thank you, thank you, Sean, thank you very much. Okay.
One more comment, okay? In terms of the county budget, to hire an environmental consultant, that does not have to be, that person does not have to be full-time, it can be part-time, but this person needs to be qualified, to have high standard of integrity. Because, you know, in the past, a lot of residents really already lost faith and trust in DPC, okay?
We're trying to bring it back.
So, yeah. And also, my thought is that, even if our county's budget is very tight, but when we look at how tremendous waste all these egregious project have caused to our county, and how much damage, you know, the waste is just huge to the financial, financial resources, to manpower, and this is a huge loss to the county and to the community.
I appreciate that, and no Val will be looking into it, we'll talk more.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sean, thank you. Thanks, President.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good. My name is Candace White. Oh my, I'm not loud enough, I thought. I'm really loud. My name is Candace White, and I'm Howard County born and bred, several generations here. We are originally from the other end of the county, down towards Savage, that started to get a little crowded, so we decided we'd pull up stakes and come out here to the scenic western part of the county. I think when we arrived here, I think our zoning may have been five acres at the time, then I think we were down to three, and now we're cluster zoning. And my question should be pretty simple and quick, I guess. Are we looking at high density at any point up here? Are we, are we looking at running water, gas, anything like that? At what point is that going to stop? Because I know it is being looked at, so at what area is, are we going to stop it? And do we ever have to worry about this in the next, I don't know, five, 10 years? Is there anything on the books? And is there any more development, cluster development? Because there is a development going on right across the street, actually, that's, I believe, about 40 or 50 houses or so going in, cluster development as well. So, you know, simple question, you know, any high-density headed out here? And how many more cluster developments in our western part of the county can we expect?
Okay, well, thank you for your question. Now, I mean, there certainly can't be high density, if you don't have water and sewer, you can't have density.
So we're not gonna get that, right?
Well, I just, I mean, it would cost way, way too much money to bring that out here right now. I mean, when I was on the county council, one person asked me one time, "Hey, if you got it out here, it'd be great, we could do this, all this great development out here," and I've said, "There's no way." I mean, Chris could probably confirm this, and also, I should mention that Greg Fox is here now, your county council member from District 5, so thank you for being here, Greg. I mean, it's, that line is, that hasn't moved much at all in years. I mean, when I was on the county council, it was huge where we let it go, I don't know if you remember this, Chris, but we let it go from St. Louis Church to next door so the parsonage could have water. I mean, it was a huge issue that we went next door to the parsonage. I mean, so that's how big the bowels are to ever move it at all. It very seldom moves at all, and we're out here, it's gonna take, I mean, I'll be dead before we ever, if they ever have water and sewer out here. So that's not gonna happen. So, but with cluster developments, you know, I don't know what properties are available that can do that. I mean, whatever property is available to do that, right now in Tier 4, there's very seldom gonna be any cluster development, because you're gonna have four houses, the most you can put on the property. But I think that it all depends on the properties and the size of them, and if the Tier 4 changes, that's all I can say about that, but I mean, nothing's gonna be high density, there's no way. No way.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Vona, and not to take up too much time on the mold issue, but I just wanted to, Ms. Berry is one of the parents, she's obviously very frustrated. Our daughter is actually one of the people who at that school is affected. Not only can she not really make it through a full day of school air, she can't make it through a full week, because she gets like headaches, and we actually just came back from the doctors today, the ENT, and we're gonna have to move her out of the school. And the reason why it's a big issue is because they, in the meeting in the 19, just to say this publicly, they told us they knew that they had mold growing inside the school at the abatement level since 2010. So it's right about 2015, and the reason why it came out was because another student whose parents determined that, you know, there was environmental issues in the school that were making their daughter sick, actually cornered the principal, where he's writing Mr. Eastham, you know, "What am I gonna tell these people?", like they know. And so it kind of came out at the end of the school year, and it's been a big stink because it was hidden for so long. Now, I am serving on the indoor air quality board at Howard County Public Schools. I spoke in front of the school board about the issue, and pretty much, you know, the reason why we feel this is a big issue is not just that there's mold growing in the schools, but children are actually becoming sick, because the mold's growing in the schools. And, you know, once this blew open at Glenwood, it's like, you know, all these other schools are now showing up, it's Glenel High School, Pointers Run Middle, Mountain View Middle, I guess Athleton, I think there's a few other schools in there. So it looks like it's becoming a systemic problem. And the other thing that's concerning to me, and other parents, we've done a lot of research, is this happened again, and it happened previously in 1997, with Jeffers Hill and Old Bushy Park. And it's, I hoping with the indoor air quality board, I hope you put pressure on them, and I think you are, but I mean, keep the pressure up, and I think publicly, it needs to be said that not only is the air quality bad, that it's growing mold, but children are getting sick as a result.
And thank you, and also, thank you for meeting with me in July. You're one of the individuals I was able to meet with to help me learn, and also, thanks for communicating to me as well, and letting me know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Brenda Stewart. I was the first president of the Concerned Citizens of Western Howard County, and I've been here for, you know, on a farm for, I guess, 43, 44 years. I have a concern about churches and what their entitlements are for their property. First of all, we all know that they do not pay real estate taxes, is that correct? Okay. And all, the rest of the citizens do pay real estate taxes. We had, as you know, the Dar es Salaam Islamic community proposed on rural conservation land, rural conservation land, land that is priority to agriculture. They proposed a compound of various types of buildings on the property, which I think were outrageous. Having several tennis courts, having residences for people to go and retreat, having residences there on the property for the workers there, having underground parking, putting up high steeples, if you will. And I am concerned about the, now Marriott'sville is attempting to do the same thing. They want to divide the property up with residences, they want to...
What do you say Marriott'sville, what do you mean Marriott'sville?
The Presbyterian Church.
Oh, Chapel Gate?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Chapel Gate. And they are trying to have part of the property commercial. Where do we, where do we say enough is enough in terms of the type of things that they are entitled to do versus somebody who has a daycare center and is running competition with a church that doesn't have a real estate tax? Where can we find a solution that doesn't require them to continue to expand on their property? What protection do we have? For instance, a lot of tennis courts, I know another farm person who, he makes part of his living with his tennis courts. So there's competition, but this person, these people that are not in the church are paying taxes. So I'm concerned majorly about how, how much extension of the facilities should be provided for things outside of, a place for the rabbi to live, a place for a pastor to live, versus expanding as they did. It cost us, the various people who fought this, this compound at Dar es Salaam, it cost us a lot of money, it cost us a lot in lawyer fees, and it cost us a lot of time. And it was absolutely 100% ridiculous to put something like that, where you had two major, major horse farms, and also abutting a third farm on rural conservation land. Where, where can we find a way to curtail that type of thing out here?
Okay. Just real quick, on the Chapel Gate, just on the church, are you talking about them not selling their property, or them expanding their own facilities on the property?
Well, as I understand it, and I certainly am reading the Howard County Times, it sounds as though they want to have a commercial part of that parcel.
Okay. Because I'm trying to think, I mean, I can't imagine a church could own a commercial property and use it for profit or something, I just can't, if they do that, I don't know how that would work with taxes and how they could do that. If they're just selling their property, there's frankly nothing we can do. If they want to sell their property, they can sell their property, and they can sell it to a developer, they can sell it to whatever, as long as it's allowed in that zoning. But if they're expanding it, if they're putting in tennis courts, as you say, or whatever, and if they're charging people to go to those tennis courts, then I would, I don't, we have to talk about that, I think that would be an interesting issue there, if the church were charging people to come play in their courts. So I don't, we can look into that and see, I don't know the answer to that.
It's not just the tennis courts, it's just enabling somebody to have facilities that are in competition with people who do not do pay real estate taxes, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. I mean, they're not in competition if they're not charging, because then certainly it's your free to go to it. But I mean, if they're charging, I'd like to find out what they can actually do as a commercial venture, as a church, I just don't know if the answer is that.
And, and the other issue is pre-submission meetings. They've been very haphazardly distributed to people out here when there is a change of zoning. We have signed up, I don't know how many times, the Concerned Citizens, to get notices about pre-submission of changes in zoning in our area. And we've tried to expand the area to which you get a notice, and it really has been very haphazard. I think Wally and I both received various times ones, but I think we ought to kind of look at the pre-submission situation.
That's fair, we could sort of, we could sort of look at that, we try our best we can to make sure everybody in affected areas will find out about that, but we can certainly look at that and see what we can do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stewart, thank you. Hello, young man.
Hey, how you doing? My name is Ivan Bettencourt, I reside in Popular Spring, and in February, my wife and I decided to put an addition in our house. And as of today, I haven't put a shovel in the ground. The permitting process in this county has been a complete obstacle after obstacle after obstacle, and not only that, but it's costly to the point of three or four times higher than surrounding counties to get a building permit. How are you and your administration gonna try to address this issue for regular citizens that just want to stay in the county and expand their households? Not only are we gonna pay the permit fee, but then when they come and assess our households, we're gonna have to pay taxes on top of that. So my particular project is, on permits alone, $11,000. And every step of the way has been an expense to do this, an expense to do that. Last week, I had one more obstacle, and luckily, with your office and Greg Fox's office, I was able to solve that problem. But the process as a whole has been cumbersome for the citizens of Howard County, so how would you address that?
Well, I appreciate, first of all, I address it because you're bringing it to my attention, which is what I need, and that's why we have forums like this to get the information out. So I'm glad that with Greg's help and my office's help, we were able to help with that one issue. But because you brought it to my attention, I'm certainly gonna have us go looking at what's going on here, because I wasn't aware that it was so difficult for the residents, I just wasn't. And so, we can be working with the Department of Inspection, License and Permits, as well as DPC, to see what's going on there, and also, why we're more expensive than these other jurisdictions. I mean, I think as we talked, maybe, I was wondering if some things might be state regulations, but you would think that would be the same across jurisdictions. So I don't know why we're charging, or what we're charging more, why we're dealing more than other counties, so because of what you've helped me do, we're gonna review all that and work with you on it. Thank you. Thank you. Hey, Alan.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Alan Schneider. Thank you very much for bringing a breath of fresh air to Howard County. We've been very excited about the changes that could be made going forward. And as the previous gentleman said, I have found out that there are many people who said that Howard County has the most restrictive requirements, and what we need to do is clean it up, make it easier for small businesses and residences to get done what the larger commercial developments seem to be able to handle in a snap. And those things need to be looked at very carefully, you know, like the mortuary. And that gets into an issue with the rain tax, and I was opposed to the rain tax too. I thought, "Well, that doesn't make a lot of sense." But we all need to protect Chesapeake Bay, and we need to meet the requirements of the state, which means that we have to clean up 20% of our impervious surfaces in the next four years. Now, the Department of Stormwater Management says that's gonna cost $20 million a year. Well, we're only collecting 10, so that sounds like, okay, we're gonna raise taxes. Well, there are simple solutions to those problems that do not cost a lot of money. One of them is, and I know your Stormwater Management, I know what their purview is, their jurisdiction is, they have to, they have to mitigate the existing problems. Would be very, very simple to prevent the problem before it happens. Doesn't cost anything at all. And yet, if that problem goes forward, it's gonna cost millions, if anything, if not a lot more, to fix it. And those things that I understand Val is taking into consideration with his hiring of a environmental reviewer, to make sure that the misinformation, the lack of information as proposed by some developers to say, "Oh, well, everything is fine," is actually reviewed independently. reviewed independently by somebody who really takes a very serious look at those things to prevent the irreversible damages that's going to cause the citizens here a lot, a lot of money. And I would also like to mention, too, with regard to that ten million dollars, a lot of that money can go back to people who are remediating and achieving the goal of protecting Chesapeake Bay. So that money is available to people here in Western Howard County. And as a student in the Watershed Management, Watershed Stewards Academy, I'm finding out about how much money can be come back to the citizens. And there are other ways of making sure that the people who do not cause the problem are not charged with fixing it. The people who cause the problem are the ones that should be held accountable. They are the ones that should pay for it. And that's part of what's going on with the Task Force on Infrastructure, the adequate-
APOF.
Right. The adequate public facilities before high-density development comes to this county. A lot of things that need to be looked at to find out simple solutions, and that's where, that's where the farmers come into, into play. Because like my father, and I grew up on a small seven-acre farm, he watched his pennies. And, and he was able to be successful by being careful with how to spend the money. And that's what I think you do, too.
Okay.
And I appreciate that, and thank you very much.
No, I appreciate that. I will tell you, though, any new developments are already incorporating the Stormwater Management. I mean, that's part of the regulation now. What we're having to do is to remediate all the ones that were done previously, and that's why we have those, those acres we've got to deal with. But to talk about the, the other way in which we can deal with this, and my office will be looking at is the fact that you don't need as much money if you do bonding, and you can actually leverage some money for the future. So if it says, you know, we need fifteen, twenty million dollars, we can do it with less if we use it and leverage it the right way. So, though, we're looking at all those different ways of doing it, so.
Oh, one more thing. I'd like to invite everyone to free breakfast and lunch. The-
Free breakfast and lunch?
Free breakfast and lunch. Now, I'll put it up on the, the board here. Members of the agricultural community and residential communities are getting together to unite, to share their efforts to improve local water quality, which is an important issue for all of us. So I'll put this on the board. You can go to CleanWaterHoward.com.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Alan. Hey, Chris.
Good evening.
Hi, Chris.
My name is Chris McComas, lifetime resident of Howard County. Grew up in Ellicott City, but moved out here twenty-some years ago to raise our four children. I don't know how many people here are familiar with what has happened to our family in the last few years. I see somebody just raised a wristband for me. Thank you. I know that you do, and I see that you have your wristband. If you, I know that it's getting late and long, but for those of you that may not know our story, I would like to go through it just a little bit-
Take your time, Chris.
-because I have some serious, serious concerns about what's going on in our community right now that I think need to be mediated. I don't know how much power you have to do that, but you need to hear us, because it's got, we've got to have answers, because I believe that children are at risk. Okay? Like I said, I was born and raised in Ellicott City, lifelong resident of Howard County, and I've always been very, very proud to be a K through twelve educated person. Howard County is second to none, I thought, for the education system and for ethics. My husband and I have four daughters. Right now, they're ages fifteen to twenty-four. And we've always felt blessed to live here and very secure to make our home here. The position that we found ourselves in since summer of 2011, though, has been nothing short of a nightmare. And somehow, amidst the beauty and the plenty of this land that we all live in here and the espoused civility, choose civility, which is Howard County, we were not able to protect our child, who was a sweet, loving daughter named Grace. She died on Easter Sunday of 2012, attempting to flee the pain inflicted upon her by multiple people and public entities, beginning with a young man that lived next door, who was the son of dear friends, and the ability of anybody within the county system to effectively help her by stopping him, holding him accountable for his actions, or even making him apologize. And that continues to this day. The horror of our story is we were aware of what was going on. We were aware of her struggle. She was not a sullen and uncommunicative teen. She was joyful from birth. And that's what made this so shocking, I think, to our community at large. With four kids, you get to know a lot of people. You know, if you're active in the community, you get to know a lot of people, and this was not a child that was at risk. This was not a child that you would ever have expected to lose in such a way. We did all the things that the bullying experts at the time said to do. We got her support. We screenshot. We reached out to the police and to the schools and to the courts, asking for help, which did not come in any meaningful way. And the problem is, is the school from the get-go, there, there are multiple public entities that I have a problem with, but the school in particular knew from the get-go about a possible drug-assisted sexual assault that was not investigated properly. A young twenty, she's fourteen years old. She was not yet allowed to date. She went to homecoming that year. That's it. And a twenty-something muscle-bound police officer comes and shrugs his shoulders without hearing anything and says, it's not illegal for people to have sex. So I have questions about the police department and what kind of training they get. I also have questions about the school system, because she came to us right away within, you know, the next day was Father's Day. She didn't want to ruin it, she said. So the next day, she told us everything that happened. And I immediately got in touch with the school system. Well, within a few days, someone had confided in a teacher who had to break confidence, went to the counselor. Counselor was supposed to call both families. Ours played phone tag. It was the last two days of school. They went on vacation, and I never heard from them again. However, because I knew what was going on, I asked to have, be changed to a female counselor. I had to go through Principal Schindler to do that and made them aware of everything that was happening at the time, because I knew we were going to have, you know, it was going to be difficult. This is, I can't say half the things that I want to say to you publicly here, because of the things that were said to my daughter aren't things that you can say in public. But for instance, tweets that are like, "I hate, 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 hate you. Next time, my name rolls off your tongue, I hope you choke on it and die. You might as well. You're just a lousy piece of..." "Snitches, I will kill you. Snitches should have their fingers cut off, one by one, while they watch their families When something happened and she became very upset, and I called his mother and said, this has got to stop. He's got to leave her alone. By that time, I was, I, I made a fake account and I went out. I didn't even know what Twitter was. But for months, the court said they could make it stop, and they did not. And they have since lied about that. And I am trying to get her court record to prove that. But I've been waiting years at this point. But my point is, is that something's broken, and it needs attention. And when I stood up at that mold meeting, I started paying attention to what was going on with the mold meeting and the lack of transparency and the lack of honesty. And I'm sure you saw the principal from the school that your daughter works at and that your child goes to school at and that my child goes to school at, running away from a reporter who had a microphone, because the day before, he had blatantly sent out something home that said, there is no mold in the school. And then the next day, Howard County School says, yes, there's mold there. I don't know whose job it is to do all the different things that, but I feel like there is an ethical problem. I know that some of what they do is illegal, and it needs to be looked at, because my feeling is, the reason, I didn't even say, the wristbands are when Grace died. There is now a law in the state of Maryland called Grace's Law that will protect children from the type of cyberbullying that we were not able to protect her from. Alan Kittleman had a huge part of getting that law made when he was Senator Kittleman, and I will forever be grateful for that. And you're a good man, and I know you, I know that you mean well. But this can't go on any longer. It needs to be publicly discussed. It needs to be remedied. I'm not sure how, but I need you to hear us, because I don't think that is coming through, or maybe, I don't know. But I will say, just today, if, if you're on Facebook, I have a memorial page for our daughter, which is how we did a lot of the advocacy that got the law made. I just shared for the first time yesterday, you know, I didn't want to go any legal route. So many things went wrong. I didn't know where to focus, and I wanted to make the most good out of what had happened. And so we started walking towards the law. I wasn't trying to punish anybody. I assumed they were good people, doing the best that they could do, and they messed up. However, the more this goes on, the longer this goes on, and, and when I have finally, you know, somebody, this is actually one of Grace's, Grace's doctor gave me the name of a lawyer. I was too confused and too broken that year to think about anything, but I thought it, you know, after the law was made, I came around and thought some more. And we requested her files through a lawyer, and they sent immunization files, kindergarten records-
You're talking about the school system?
Yes, the school system.
Okay, so I wasn't sure what the quarter was.
The school system. Sent everything except anything that had to do with the counseling center or the Student Services Department. So, you know, they wouldn't do anything for her. If you can imagine, those tweets went out to hundreds of people at a time, mostly in her peer group. And I presented in October of 2011 to the school, and they said, well, there's nothing we can do. It didn't happen in school. Well, now I've come to realize, well, actually, the bullying form does say electronic communication counts. So they didn't send those records. And again, I am still recovering. I will never recover. But I did circle back around again last year and had another law firm ask for her files and say, last time you left these things out, we don't need this, because you sent this. Where is this? And by law, they had a certain number of weeks to get back to them, by law, and they just ignored it. And that shouldn't be allowed. You already know that when Grace died, Principal Schindler wouldn't allow a memorial in the yearbook. When the yearbook came out months later, she wasn't even in it. When her classmates wanted to wear the little blue ribbons, he said no. The Board of Ed said no. And this community rose up in great numbers, and a lot of kids that graduated from Glennell years ago came up and said, this is wrong. It was in the, in the Baltimore Sun. They said, this needs to be fixed. This child went to school with them since she was three, from three to 10th grade. We're a family out here. We have been treated poorly by that school and that school system since this began. And I really think that it's just a travesty, and something needs to happen.
Well, Chris, before you go, um-
I actually, I actually have something else to say.
Okay, okay. I was going to say-
One, one more quick thing. I've been working with other people. I don't know whose job it is to let people know that a law exists. Nobody seems to know. There are still police officers that, you know, through the memorial page, I have people come and say, look, this is happening to my child. And I say, I always vet it. And I say, show me what you've got. And I see things that are death-wishing, that are horribly damaging. And those people went to a police officer in the state of Maryland, and the guy says, it's free speech. So I'm asking you to put some effort behind promoting this law, because I also know that Stand Up Hoco, under Ken Olmen, which was, you know, quite frankly, he was frustrated with the school system-
Right.
-as well. So this Stand Up Hoco was a program, an anti-bullying program throughout the county. You know, it was a, it was a community program. And it also had an instant, you know, I think it's this for safety issues, there should be an instant way that kids or anybody in this community can, can get in contact with you or the police or whomever and say, I'm hearing, that somebody might have a gun today, or I'm hearing this, that, or the other. And, and I know that program is now defunct. They never talked about Grace's Law, and I'm, I'm asking you to find some funding-
No, I appreciate that. I was going to tell you about it. I checked in that today as well, on the Stand Up Hoco. And I've been told that the Voices for Change and the Local Children's Board are working on getting that more reinvigorated again, so, but I'll work with them to make sure that happens, also the police department. But before you go-
Yeah.
You know, probably one of the most impactful moments of my life was when Chris and Gloria sat next to me on the Senate floor, and that bill was passed. You talk about somebody who has tremendous perseverance and tremendous courage is Chris McComas. And I can't imagine, even for one instant, what, what your family goes through every day. And I also want to tell everybody, she's being very kind to me tonight. No, I'll tell you why. She and I talked last year, and I will tell you, I failed her, because I haven't been able, or I haven't gone forward and done all that I could possibly do to help her. And so she was so kind to me. She went outside and talked to me tonight before this started, and we discussed it. And I told her, I'm sorry I failed you. I, I won't do that. I'll make it happen. I'll make sure that you have the opportunity, again, something that I don't have control over, but at least I have the ability to get you to meet the people that you need to meet and to talk to the people you need to talk, whether it be the school system, the state's attorney's office-
I really want it to be a public discussion, because I don't want them hiding, the times that I've been lied to by the state's attorney was a private discussion that Ken Olmen made happen, because he knew what had happened. And I, I, I don't-
Okay, well, we'll work-
Okay. I will say, I, I, the point that I should have, my main point I wanted to make is, I have a concern that unless we fix these things, I have not heard anything from anybody telling me that children, something has changed so that this can't happen again to another child or another family. And that's what I'm here to talk about.
And I appreciate that. And that's what Grace's Law is all about, too. So thank you very much, Chris. Thank you for your kindness. She's a class act, folks.
Mr. Kittleman, good evening. I'm Don DiVali. I live up near the swim club that we have, right here in our ZEC area.
See, there is a swim club here now?
Yes, there is. There she is. And it's not that expensive. But what I wanted to mention, I'm no authority. I have no, no solid facts or anything like that, but I have heard a number of occasions now that in our area here, we've become, we're becoming more and more the, the largest crime rate area in the, in this county, or in the state, maybe. I don't know, county, probably it has to be. And I'm surprised to hear that, but I'm concerned if that be the case. I know our next RDA was, was robbed or attempted to be robbed and things like that, so it concerned me. Okay, that's-
Well, no, thanks for bringing my attention. I had not heard that this was, but I mean, I certainly talked to the police department. I can get sit down with them and go through that and see what's going on.
Like I say, the fact that they say we're the highest, highest crime rate area in the county, that-
Yeah, I just have a hard, I have a hard time believing that, but, um, but what I could do-
Follow me up.
Yeah. But, um, but if you could, get your contact information to one of the gentlemen ladies in the back, that we can get back to you.
Okay.
Because if we can check the police department, we can at least get back to you with the, with the facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ted, you already had your question.
I'm not going to ask if anybody else has questions. Any more questions from the audience for Alan? Well, we do have someone. Okay, come on up.
Hi, Margaret Walton. I lived in Clarksville for about fifty years, and I do want to thank Greg for getting Havlin Mill Road partially paved for the bicycles especially. It was just so bad. It took him a while. He dropped the ball. He admitted it, but he stepped up and said, I'll get it done. They also, the road people, they did a great job. We live at the end of Wayside, so when the snowplow comes, they tear up our driveway. We're in Florida, so it's okay till we come back. But the road crew and- But the road crew in Dayton, they did a great job on fixing that. You know, as you know, we're still fighting this thing about all these homes, twenty-three homes of one acre on Havli Mill Road. And, um, I just can't see twenty-three homes with septic and wells on our road clustered on one-acre lots. So, anyway.
Now, thank you for speaking up.
Yep.
And I will continue to work with Val. We'll talk about it.
Right. And Val's, he's been very cooperative with us, and we appreciate that.
Ted, thank you very much for speaking up. Thank you. Hey, Tammy.
How are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Um, not to beat a moldy horse, but I'm here to talk about the mold as well just a minute, so nobody heard me.
That's fine.
Um, first of all, we have, I have a child, well, we have four children, one at Lisbon, one at Glen, one at two at Glenel. Mold in all the schools, as I'm sure you've heard. It's not just one tile. We have kids at Glenel taking pictures every day. I've talked to the custodians there. There's mold everywhere. They've been told just to clean the ceiling tiles or flip them, clean them, whatever. Okay? That's not fixing the problem. I know that much of the county budget goes towards the Board of Ed.
A lot.
Which I'm happy. We have great teachers all over the place. However, um, where's the oversight and where this money's going? We need this fixed. We need your help especially because we're getting, I've emailed, I know many people. I know Jill's taken through Facebook and everything. Nobody will answer. When you call, oh, they're out of the office. You email, no return emails at all. And quite frankly, you know, if all this money's going to the Board of Ed, which is fine, some of it needs to be, to fixing this mold issue. Okay? It's the health of our children. It's the health of our children, and that matters, I think, to everybody here.
Okay. And I appreciate you saying that because I mean...
I mean, like I said, it's not just one, that's wrong. Also, at Lisbon Elementary last year, the media center flooded. They did not replace that carpet. I know for a fact that there was moldy books there, and what are they doing to fix this? So we can't just cover it up. There wasn't just a little bit of mold in a, in a little, whatever it was, in the window. So there's mold.
Well, I mean, that's, that's that one thing, was that?
Yeah, yeah. But there's a lot of mold, and it needs to be fixed, and it doesn't mean, I love the custodians there, nothing against them, but it's not just them scrubbing the tiles. They need to fix it before there's litigation involved and somebody, you know, this isn't right. And we need answers, and the Board is not answering to us, and I know that our health matters.
No, thank you, Tammy. Thank you for bringing it up, too. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And like I say, I went to Glenel just the other day, and, and they're, they're, they're telling me it was that one tile, but I'll, I'll talk to them again.
It's not. It's not. The kids have phones at school, which, you know, good or bad, they're taking pictures, and we have proof.
Okay, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You take another question, Alan?
Sure, of course.
I just wanted to say something about cluster zoning.
Yep.
You know, I brought it to Howard County. I expect people to throw their shoes at me right now. But, um, the zoning was written by developers, not by land planners.